Ali Franklin. The Honorable Dr. Robert Franklin Jr. The Honorable Eunice Glover. The Honorable Jack Harden. The Honorable Celia Hurston Torrance.
Present.
The Honorable Ingrid Saunders Jones. The Honorable Dr. J. Allen Milner Sr. The Honorable A.J. Robinson. The Honorable Gregory Giornoli. The Honorable Judy Taylor. We do have a court of members present.
Former Atlanta Mayor Shirley Franklin's service to this city didn't end when she left office. She's still working, still investing, still giving. She has joined Atlanta City Councilmember Andrea Boone and local high school students on a number of college tours.
Having a college tour allows young people to see firsthand what college is like. They don't have to wait until they go. They can see what a lecture hall looks like. They can see how students conduct themselves. The student tours today are conducted by students of Auburn University, which is the best way to do it, to have young people talking to other young people about why they like the school, why they came here, why they chose it, and what they can learn.
Shirley Clark Franklin became the 58th mayor of the city of Atlanta, securing her place in history as the first female and the first black woman mayor of a major southern city. She received her Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology from Howard University and her Master's degree in sociology from the University of Pennsylvania. She would later marry David Franklin, an attorney and political strategist. The couple had three children.
I'm so excited to be in Savannah with May's high school students. There are about 80 students and they're chaperones. And we've come to visit Savannah, but also to visit Savannah State University.
Franklin's incredible journey was influenced by her mother, who was an educator, and her father, a judge. She moved to Atlanta in the early 1970s and served as the Commissioner of Cultural Affairs under Mayor Maynard Jackson, then Chief Administrative Officer and City Manager under Mayor Andrew Young. She didn't aspire to a career in politics, but her impressive problem-solving skills and strong leadership qualities led a small group of close friends, including former mayors Jackson and Young, to suggest she run for mayor. After much consideration, she courageously stepped into her destiny. And was rewarded with over 50% of the vote, Mayor Franklin went to work. During her two terms in office, she advocated for ethics legislation and comprehensive operational reforms. She navigated the city out of an $80 million deficit. She pushed for over $6 billion in improvements to the world's busiest airport, affordable housing, parks, and an initiative called Clean Water Atlanta, which addressed the city's water and sewers.
Of the top 20 things that I think I will be remembered for. I will be remembered as the sewer mayor. And I wear that badge very proudly.
Under her guidance, the city of Atlanta acquired the Bellwood Quarry, which would be transformed into a reservoir for drinking water. Her administration spearheaded the Atlanta Beltline Project.
So the Beltline is the beneficiary of two or three years of really hard work that allowed us to say to Atlanta, let's not just worry about today. Let's worry about 50 years from now.
This is James Orange. He was a young man, like 18 or 19, when John Lewis was beaten on the bridge. And he's actually the one who carried him to safety.
Mayor Franklin's love of history and the importance of preserving it led to the acquisition of the Morehouse College Collection of the Martin Luther King Jr. Papers. As Board Chair for the National Center for Civil and Human Rights, Franklin helped oversee its creation.
I hope what they'll see in the National Center for Civil and Human Rights is both the history of Atlanta, but also a kind of the history of struggle against discrimination and Jim Crow. And also see how that's related to what's going on around the world in human rights.
When she left office, her passion and work for Atlanta continued. Franklin's accomplishments are too numerous to list. Her sincere concern for the future of Atlanta, coupled with her candid and no-nonsense approach to leadership, has garnered a deep, abiding respect and love from those she encounters.
One of my favorite quotes when I was serving as mayor was, "The best way to predict the future is to create it."
And one way Franklin is creating that future is by pouring into the children who are our future. Franklin says she's returning to her first love, uplifting young people and helping them open the doors of opportunity. Not just exposing them to higher education, but also to encourage the pursuit of greatness within themselves.
Ladies and gentlemen, and to the distinguished commission seated before you this evening, to our distinguished council members, to invited guests and friends. Good evening, I'm Dr. Robert Michael Franklin Jr. And I'm honored to be in your company. Welcome to the Shirley Franklin Commission Public Hearing. I really appreciate the words expressed during that video. That quote, "Shirley Franklin is still working, still investing, still giving." She's pouring into the lives of young people by exposing them to the world around them. And this is just one example of Mayor Franklin's commitment to the city of Atlanta, and there are countless, countless others. Ladies and gentlemen, this is why we gathered tonight and we plan to give honor where honor is due. Earlier this year, the Atlanta City Council enacted legislation to determine an appropriate manner in which to honor Mayor Franklin. And this 14-member commission has been meeting since June. Now, they want to hear from you. So I'd like to take this moment to introduce a man who is passionate about this commission and its efforts. He is a visionary. As one observer might say, he has been around the world twice and seen everybody three times. Mr. W. Imara Kennedy.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Good evening, good evening. It is truly wonderful to be with you all this evening. Those that have joined us physically here and also those that have joined us online and through the live broadcast of City Channel 26. First and foremost, we just want to, if we could, just give a round of applause to the city council staff who has been instrumental in getting us to this point. And also to the leadership of our phenomenal Atlanta City Council, particularly Councilwoman Andrea Boone and Marcy Overstreet, who have led the charge of the legislation and have moved us forward to this part. If we can also give them a round of applause. You know, this commission, not that any other commission that has been appointed by the city council is of any less importance, but there's a particular importance of the work that this commission has been charged to do. And we take that very seriously. And that is really to speak to how do we continue to personify the legacy of a historical figure who has led this city in many iterations, both during her time for leadership with Mayor Young, Mayor Jackson, and then of course coming onboard as our city's 58th mayor, being the first woman mayor of the city of Atlanta and the first African-American woman mayor of a major southern city. But also because of the continued work that she is doing to positively impact young people, positively impact the lives of our seniors, and continuing to positively impact not only this community, but this region, and I would dare to say the globe in so many different ways. And that is significant work. Atlanta is blessed to be a city of great historical magnitude and has numerous historical figures that, thank God, many who are still with us today. And I just want to take a moment and honor and say thank you to Ambassador Andrew Young for joining us. If we could give him a round of applause as well. And so we don't take this work lightly, because what we understand what comes out of this commission and is then moved forward to the city council and the mayor, speaks to how generations to come will have a glimpse and an inkling of who is this phenomenal human being that we know to be known as Shirley Clark Franklin. So, we charge you, the public, because she is not this 14-person's mayor. She was the city's mayor. She continues to be a servant to this community. So, our charge is that as we take on the tremendous task of doing this work, that we get your feedback and your input to say, "How should the city of Atlanta recognize this great leader, this historical figure? This hero for many." There are, I can give you countless young people that are now grown people that can speak to their success, whatever their professional way of life is, because of one person called Shirley Clark Franklin, not only saw them, but spent the time to support them. Just a quick story to show you that when Mayor Franklin launched the Mayor's Youth Program, those of us on her staff literally got tense, because she ended up giving hundreds of Atlanta Public School juniors and seniors her personal cellphone number to call to say, "If you need some help, let me know." You know, if you know that, that's not a traditional way that any leader operates. But, and they did, and it was wonderful. And they continued to call her to say, "Mayor Franklin, I thank you. Because of what you did for me, I am now doing this. Because of what you did for me, I was able to do this." So this speaks to who Shirley Clark Franklin is. Also, I wanted to, we wanted to make sure that, we ensured that there was true accessibility of this public process. So we're so glad to see a few hundred folks here in the council chambers with us. We know that there's others online. But if you aren't able to make it, and over the course of the next few weeks, up until October 11th at 11:59 PM, we will continue to take public comment around, the public's thoughts around honoring Mayor Franklin, both through the online process. And individuals can go to the city's website at atlantaga.gov. Scroll over to where it says "residents", and when you kind of put your browser over that, you'll see where it will scroll down to where it says "honoring Shirley Franklin." Click on that, and then it will take you through the process to find out how everyone across this region can give their input. As well as, we will have locations over the next few weeks throughout the city, where folks can take a physical card, fill it out, put it in a box that will be available, and we'll be collecting those as well. Again, as a reminder, that public commentary process will continue until 11:59 PM on October the 11th. And we ask that people give lots of great ideas. Lastly, we do recognize that Atlanta is a great city of so many people that have moved here, even as recently as today, to call this home. And we want to make sure that you know that as you become a resident of the city of Atlanta, or if you're a relatively new resident of the city of Atlanta, that you know the impact of Shirley Clark Franklin to this community and why it's a great community that you can live, work, and play in now. And so also on the city's website, there is a component of the website, again going through that same process, that gives you a glimpse of the impact and continued impact of Shirley Franklin. And we encourage you to take time to read through both the short and extended bio that exists on that. As Dr. Franklin stated, the commission was appointed by various entities, and we're going to have a moment for each commission member to introduce themselves and who they were appointed by, as well as members of the Atlanta City Council and Mayor Dickens. From that point, we begin the process of, you know, just looking at, what are the opportunities that the city has to honor an individual? We've continued that work to ensure, what is the process that we wanted to have in place in compliance with the city's process, to ensure that there is public commentary, hence we are today and hence where we will move forward. As well as to ensure that we were doing the proper outreach to make sure folks were aware of the important work of this commission and of information about Mayor Franklin, again, if they were not familiar with her, being new Atlantans to the community. And now, we got to this point this evening. Continuing forward, we'll take the continued public comment, both through the physical written cards at locations around the metropolitan area, as well through the online process. That process, as I've stated, will culminate at 11:59 on October the 11th. The commission members will then come back together after the city council staff has had an opportunity to pull all of the information online, all of the cards that have come through, through our community outreach, to then kind of create a synopsis of what are the various recommendations that have been made by the greater community of how to honor Mayor Franklin. That will then be reviewed. There'll be more deliberations around those thoughts by this commission. And then recommendations will then be put forward to the Atlanta City Council and the mayor to how this commission, based on all of that process, of how the city should appropriately honor Mayor Franklin. If there are recommendations that are put forward through that process that impact something that is a state facility, or a state road, or is a part of the Atlanta Public School Systems, then that legislation and information will then be shared with the appropriate bodies from those institutions to see how we move forward in that regards. Of course, all of this process will be very transparent and shared throughout with the community. So again, we thank you all very much for physically joining us, whether it's here in this space, or online, or through Channel 26. And at this time, starting to my right, I'd like to ask each of the commission members to state your name and how you were appointed to this commission, starting with Mr. Giornelli. Yes.
My name is Greg Giornelli. I worked with Mayor Franklin for eight years during her administration, and I've been appointed to this commission through Purpose Built Communities, where Mayor Franklin served as chair.
Judith, you should be on.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
My name is Judith Taylor. I have been a friend of Shirley Franklin's for many, many years. And we have been members of a group called the Black Jewish Sisters. Again, for many, many years.
My name is Ingrid Saunders Jones, and I retired from the Coca-Cola Company as Chair of the Coca-Cola Foundation. However, my claim to fame is that when I came here, I worked for the city council, and then, and the city council mayor, the city council president, and then the mayor of the city of Atlanta, Maynard Jackson, before going to Coca-Cola. I've known Shirley since, almost since the day I came to Atlanta. I'm appointed by Council President Doug Shipman. I'm so sorry, A.J. This is A.J. Robinson.
My name is A.J. Robinson. I have known Mayor Franklin since the beginning of her time in working in the city with Ingrid and others. I'm here representing our Atlanta business community and officially appointed by Central Atlanta Progress.
My name is James Milner. I pastor a local church here at the Chapel of Christian Love. I worked with Mayor Franklin during her two terms. I convened her Faith-Based Roundtable. Prior to that, we served together on the board of the Atlanta Project when President Jimmy Carter convened that group. I was appointed by Councilwoman Andrea Boone.
Good evening, I'm Cecilia Houston Torrance, and I've known Shirley Clark Franklin for many, many years. And I'm happy to say that she's been a mentor and a friend. She's also a member of the Nature Girls Group that we walk every day. And I was appointed by the League of Women Voters, Atlanta Fulton County President Sheris Johnson.
Hello, I'm Susan Ross. Most of you know me as Sue. I've known Mayor Franklin for many, many years. When I first came to work in City Hall for Ambassador Andrew Young, she was the Chief Administrative Officer, so I really think she hired me. And we're glad to be here to honor her. I worked all during her administration as well. And I was appointed by Councilmember Andrea Boone.
Good evening, I am Andrea Boone, a member of the Atlanta City Council. Mayor Shirley Franklin lives in Council District 10. We would like to thank everyone who has come out tonight to honor her, and we are so looking forward to hearing your suggestions on how to honor Shirley Franklin, a legend in the city of Atlanta.
Good evening, I'm Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet, presiding over District 11, which is literally right across the street from District 10. And so, I have really admired Mayor Franklin for a very, very long time. I'm a graduate of May's High School, and just, I've raised my children in 10 and 11, as well as was married in 11, and just know the work that she's done around the city. And I'm pretty sure that I was also appointed by Councilmember Boone, even though I preside on a council.
Good evening, I'm Katie Childers, representing Delta Airlines. And as a former board member on Delta Airlines, we are so grateful for all that Mayor Franklin did for the city and continues to do.
I'm going to, before we turn it over to Dr. Franklin, at that time, he can introduce himself officially. And again, my name is Imara Kennedy, and I was appointed through the affiliation of the National Center for Civil and Human Rights, who I think many would say was a part of a threesome, if you will, both Ingrid Saunders Jones and A.J. Robinson, who, had it not been for these three, there would not be the National Center for Civil and Human Rights, led by the charge of Mayor Franklin. When she got a visit from Reverend Lowry and Mrs. Lowry saying, "You need to do something and build a museum around civil rights, and hence that great institution is here." And just before we turn it over to Dr. Franklin, we would be remiss if we didn't also just take a moment and recognize, and I would just ask them to stand and be recognized, members of Mayor Franklin's family. If you all would just stand for a moment and let us just recognize you. And we'll just say to the Franklin family, thank you all for your continuous sacrifice of Shirley Franklin, not only during the time when she was mayor, but in her prior years in city government, and in her continuous years of service, because family is first and foremost, but oftentimes we know that she's had to be away for various times there. We also want to just make note that if you have not, and you would like to make some public comments, and we'll give you the process of that. But if you would just sign up here on the left, just to the right of the podium there, so that we can make sure that the council staff can recognize those individuals and we get everyone that wants to make public comment the opportunity to do so. I'm going to now turn it over to my distinguished colleague, Dr. Robert Franklin, who will officially introduce himself, and then his appointment, and then will continue us forward. Thank you again, and God bless.
Thank you, Imara. I'm Robert Franklin, President Emeritus of Morehouse College. I had the opportunity to work closely with Mayor Franklin, no relation, by the way. As the National Center for Civil and Human Rights was being constructed, and as fundraising was occurring, I was president of Morehouse at that time. And we worked on many, many long nights and weekends, trying to ensure that the Martin Luther King Papers, owned by Morehouse College, and thanks to Mrs. Coretta Scott King and her estate, and Ambassador Andrew Young and others, who helped to make that happen. But we worked hard and it got done. So I celebrate Mayor Franklin enormously tonight. I have worked, most recently with her, as a member of the Board of the Centers for Disease Control, and Dr. Judy Monroe, the president of the Centers for Disease Control Foundation, appointed me. It's my great pleasure to just observe something here that I love all of our 104 or 5 HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities. And it's extraordinary to think about the role. Certainly in Atlanta, we are proud of our HBCUs. Much love for each and every one of them. But I have to observe Howard University has acquitted itself well. Particularly, I know that Ambassador Young's a graduate of Howard, but when it comes to extraordinary female public servants who are making history. Women, graduates of Howard, in elective office, making history. Sound promising? So we celebrate Mayor Franklin tonight. And what we are doing is important and extraordinary. Great societies from ancient Egypt to Rome, Songai, and Mali, Greece, all have identified leaders who were deserving of honor and have found ways to lift them higher and celebrate them. And as Imara said, to say to future generations, emulate this one. Remember them, learn from them. Without further ado, we look forward to hearing your voices now. And the municipal clerk will call a roll of names who have previously signed up. And as Imara said, it's not too late, I understand, if you wish to speak. The important thing to emphasize here, that each speaker will have two minutes. Two minutes to speak. Reverend Senator Warnock often says it takes him 10 minutes to clear his throat. You will not enjoy that privilege tonight. We ask you to get to the point, and as Dr. May used to teach us at Morehouse, remember the three Bs. Be good, be brief, and be seated. Madam Municipal Clerk.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. If they call Charles Huddleston.
Members of the commission, I just wanted to say how happy we were when we finally convinced Shirley Franklin to run for mayor. As you know, she'd never run for office before. How proud I was to make that call 5:30 a.m. in the morning after Election Day to tell her she won, and without a runoff. So real quickly, I want to mention a few things that I think are so important that she did for this city, two of which smacked her right up beginning of office. One was a budget deficit. Last time she told the press, it was 82 million. Ended up being over 100 million. She just stopped telling the press. Secondly, it was something called the sewer crisis. And you know she wears the badge of being the sewer mayor. Both of those, she didn't kick the can down the road. She didn't blame her predecessor. She told the public what she needed, and she got the job done. That's why she made us so proud. Thirdly, as Imara mentioned, we have a National Center for Civil and Human Rights. Dr. King's papers had been put on auction block at Sotheby's at a starting price, appraised price of $30 million. Mayor Young happened to see Shirley one morning at breakfast and said, "Did you know Mayor Bloomfield's going to buy those? Going to outbid everybody? Going to build a museum in Harlem? And we can't let that happen." So in 11 days, Shirley Franklin raised, got the family to agree if she raised 32 million, they would let the papers stay here. And then as Imara said, she helped get the land for the center, raise the money for the center. So she's done so much, made us so proud. Lastly, she negotiated to keep Delta here, make its headquarters here. She did the second big expansion of the airport. So my proposals for how to honor her involve the airport. We have a Maynard Jackson International Terminal, a Harstfield-Jackson Airport, International Atlanta Airport. We need a Shirley Clark Franklin domestic terminal. And secondly, I would suggest, thank you, a permanent way to remind it, I would suggest that we rename a street. Andy has a street name for him, John Lewis has a street name for him. Of course, Dr. King does. I believe there's only one woman in the history of Atlanta that has a street name for her, and that's Ernona Clayton. I think we name one for Shirley. I would suggest Trinity, which comes right by City Hall and the Atlanta Public School. She loved them both dearly. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Next, we have the Honorable Ambassador Andrew Young.
Thank you very much, and I freak out just about every time I pass my name up on that sign. With Jimmy Carter's library and John Lewis. And I feel like everything else I've done, you know, that's enough. But I think that when I came here, everything was going well. And I met Shirley Franklin as one of the first people in helping to run Maynard's campaign and for Senator. And she just took over everywhere she went. And so, this City Hall was not here when I was elected. She helped to implement that. She helped to implement that. The airport didn't have much of an artist collection or eye. And she was the public artist. She, along with Michael Lomax and others, continued to bring the performing arts to reality in our city. And probably not a single piece of legislation has passed that she didn't have a finger in. And even if it was just sticking her finger in your ribs, getting you to vote for it. So that there's no limit that we can put on how we should honor Shirley Clark Franklin. And I'm here, first of all, because my wife sent me. But also because whatever has happened here has got to keep happening. And most of us don't remember how it happened. And by putting Shirley's name on almost anything, we're reminding the rest of the city. And I think one of the most important things she has done was to raise money for young people in our public schools, to be able to go. She didn't just arrange to get you scholarships. She raised money to help you pay for it, whether you got it or not. And so that the development of leadership at every level is to her credit. I think that she was able to get that $32 million in about three days because she called people up and she told me, "I need to put you down for a million dollars." I said, "What for?" She said, "Don't worry, you won't have to pay it, but I need your name." And she got 50 people to put their name on a sheet. And somehow, she bargained that to bring all of the King Papers here, and then worked with others to bring the Civil and Human Rights Museum. But don't forget the importance of a street. And it bothers me that we don't have a Maynard Jackson Avenue anywhere. And that's one of the simple things we can do, and that we have the power to do, and it doesn't require much money. But it really does have a tremendous ego for yourself and your family, and for generations yet unborn. Because when you see these signs and you say, "Who was that?", somebody will know and tell you. So anything you decide to do in the name, with the name of Shirley Clark Franklin, she has already well-deserved. And you really can't go wrong. But with a little more effort, think of how we can make this really and truly right for generations yet unborn. Thanks, and God bless you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Andrew Young. If I might politely invite you all to silence your mobile devices as we proceed.
Next, we have Timothy Caffield.
Thank you, Catherine Boe. We could go on and on talking about this pioneer. She was such a magnificent mayor. She did that sewer, underground development, and it's still going on today. I made a whole lot of my time working with her. She is a pioneer. And I think we need to honor her in a special way and name her one. School, street, something special for everyone to commemorate her by. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Mercuria Chase Williams.
Good evening, I'm Mercuria Chase Williams, and I am Shirley Franklin's neighbor. I've known her since before that great privilege because we had a mutual friend in the persons of the Carroll family who knew her when she lived in Philadelphia. Shirley has always, Dr. Franklin, okay, breathe. Shirley Franklin has always been a person who cared about the city, cared about people, and was not ever too timid to say what she needed to say and be where she needed to be, to be a part of that impetus to make things happen that were good, right, and just for all people. I'm proud to say that I am her neighbor. I'm proud to say that I too am a member of Nature Girls who walk with her and see her open face and her ready concern about what is going on in the city and how she encourages us to be civically engaged and to do the things that will make this city consistently good for all people. So I urge you to consider honoring her. You can change Trinity to Franklin, Central Avenue to Franklin. You can name this building, even though it's the City, even though it's City Hall. But something great and something memorable for someone who has been consistently concerned, not for her own name, but for the welfare of the people. I urge you to take that into consideration and do something grand.
As a courtesy, I simply remind everyone that these proceedings are being recorded. Thank you.
Alicia McMichael.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Commission. I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. Today, I stand before you as not only a proud Atlantan, but the CEO and founder of Poverty to Prosperity and MPUH Public Safety Vice Chair. I believe, no, I'm sorry, excuse me. My work is deeply rooted within the city of Atlanta. And it is my belief that honoring Mayor Shirley Franklin with a major street after her is only a stepping stone in recognizing her impact and her legacy. As a young woman growing up in the city of Atlanta, I remember the significant changes she has made. Thanks to our remarkable leader, Mayor Shirley Franklin, she isn't just the first mayor, African-American mayor of Atlanta. She is a beacon of hope. She's a beacon of hope and empowerment for all women, particularly women from our community who dare to dream big. During her two terms, Mayor Shirley Franklin took a significant enhancement in stepping in on the quality of life of all Atlantans. She played a vital role in the Atlanta Beltline, which transformed neglected neighborhoods like my own into vibrant ones. She connected communities filled with parks and trails. She advocated for the youth and for housing options. One of Mayor Franklin's major projects was tackling the critical issue of the water management infrastructure. Her commitment to sustainable development helped position Atlanta as a forerunner in the urban revitalization. More so, Mayor Shirley Franklin prioritized public safety overseeing initiatives that brought down crime rates and improved the overall safety of Atlanta. She also advocated for education and health services, working tirelessly to build economic systems that all residents can thrive off of. Today, I ask that you take the time and consideration, and together, let's celebrate a remarkable contribution to Mayor Shirley Franklin for enhancing her legacy for all Atlantans.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. Next.
Next, we have Ismenti Ariyo.
Ismenti is yielding, okay. Next, please.
Next, we have Mike Ross.
Good evening. It's a very august body that I stand before today. It's a pleasure. The Atlanta Jazz Festival, the Beltline, the Fifth Runway, and mostly everything at the airport, Underground Atlanta, the water sewer system, the Atlanta Olympics, the West Side Park, the Center for Civil and Human Rights. It's almost kind of harder to find projects that she didn't work on when you talk about building this city over the last 50 years. I believe that she deserves everything she can get. A park, a school. I like Charles's idea about the airport. But one thing that really kind of is near and dear to my heart is naming a street after her, and one that can be seen from the highway. Because, you know, there are a lot of great people that we drive by, hundreds of thousands of people, millions of people drive by. You see, of course, MLK, you see Ralph David Abernathy, you see, you know, Jesse Hill, you see even Ted Turner. But you really don't see any women. And I think you said, Charles, there's only one woman, that's Zerona Clayton. And she's not on the highway. So I think it's very important. I think that Shirley has earned the honor of being put up in that pantheon of stars that hundreds of thousands of people ride by every day. And so from my perspective, she's on the Mount Rushmore of Atlanta leaders along with Maynard Jackson and Andrew Young. And so I think it's just time that we give her flowers while we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next, please.
Next, we have Ramon Garner.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Ramon Garner, and I am the very proud principal of Benjamin Elijah Mays High School. Thank you. As an Atlantan native, growing up in this city, benefiting from some of the programs like Kelp Best Friends and the PIG program, some of my heroes growing up were Ambassador Young and Maynard Jackson, and also Shirley Franklin. I can remember the Olympics, being here and working over the summer and earning money to buy school clothes. Now, as the principal of the esteemed Benjamin Elijah Mays High School, I'm blessed, and my school is blessed, to be able to partner with Ms. Shirley Franklin. Not only as a thought partner, someone that I can pick up the phone and call and run ideas by, which still blows my mind. But she takes action. When I say action, she's at the school at 5:00 a.m. in the morning, 6:00 a.m. in the morning, taking students to Auburn all day, on the bus herself, or taking students to Savannah or to Tuskegee. Last week even, she took 80 students to FAMU to show students around. And I have a few of my kids here today, Deshawn, Lodin, and Taylor, who want to come up and also speak. I think it would be an honor just to be able to ride down a major street within this great city that already has benefited from so many positive black individuals. But to be able to see a street and a park named after Mayor Franklin, I would be honored to be able to do that and benefit from that on a day-to-day basis. So that would be my recommendation, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak.
Next, please.
Deshawn Katron.
Good afternoon. We're going to do a little something unorthodox. We're actually products of Benjamin Mays, E. Mays. Mr. Garner is my principal, I'm the counselor. I heard that you guys have already witnessed our video that we took last year with Councilwoman Boone, as well as Shirley, Mayor Shirley Franklin, where they paid for us to go, as well as, not only just paid, because I've been in the school system for over 27 years, I've never had a mayor, as well as a councilwoman, to enter and get on a bus. And not only just get on the bus, but as well, they were able to communicate and talk to our kids the whole time. They didn't sit in trucks behind sunglasses or whatever. So thank you, Councilwoman Boone, as well as Mayor Shirley Franklin. I also want to say, as the niece of Mel Blunt, Hall of Famer, cousin of Larry Blunt, the first black attorney for the University of Georgia, where there's a bus, as well as the niece of President Dr. Clyde Hall of Savannah State University, I know what history looks like, I know what legends are. Shirley Mayor, Mayor Shirley, Mayor Shirley. I'm sorry, got caught up in names. Mayor Shirley, she deserves not only just a seat at the table, but she deserves more than a seat. She deserves her name on the airport, on the street, in the schools, wherever you can place her name. It is more than time for us to not only just honor our black men, but also our black women. And I'm going to tag out and let a door that was opened due to the fact the field trip happened. Right here, we're going to talk to, I'm sorry, I got tied.
Deshawn Katron, thank you.
Hey, I just wanted to tell y'all about my experience of meeting Mayor Shirley Franklin. I attended the Savannah State Trip. And just being out there, I didn't know who she was at first. We was out there, you know, we ate, had fun. We went to a couple of museums or whatnot. And my biggest thing with her was her humility. We end up walking down at the pier, and she ended up telling us who she was. But throughout the whole time, it was never about who her name was. It was just about us having the experience and us opening our eyes to, you know, different schools and different experiences. And as I close, I just wanted to, my biggest moment with her was when we went to the Capitol of Savannah, and the mayor at Savannah had given her a key to the city. And one thing I just wanted to leave off with is just giving a key to my success, which is my book called The World Is Yours, that I've just recently published. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, brother Deshawn. And you don't have to go to Savannah for school. Think about Morehouse. All right, next, please.
Next, we have Lodin Habershon.
First and foremost, I would like to thank Principal Gardner and his staff for giving me the pleasure to speak on glowing remarks about Mayor Franklin. With that being said, my name is Lodin Habershon. I attend Mays High School, currently a 12th grader. When you have young kids like myself and my fellow classmates who are speaking to you guys today, who look up to people sitting in seats that you're sitting, the main assumption that we get is how unreachable you guys look and feel. Now, one of the many things that come to mind regarding Mayor Franklin, how reachable she is and how touchable she is. Recently, my school went on a college trip to Florida Agriculture and Mackinac University, otherwise known as FAMU, in part because of Mayor Franklin. And it was astonishing to see the look on my fellow classmates, seeing how this is someone who looks like us in places that we'd never thought we could reach. So a road, park, street simply wouldn't do it justice for the impact she has made. Personally, I think a statue would be the greatest honor, not only because of the history she has made, but because of the lasting impact she has continued to leave on the city of Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Habershon. Great to see you and hear from our students. Next, please.
Next, we have Cecilia Corbin Hunter.
Good afternoon, members of the City of Atlanta Commission to Honor Mayor Shirley Clark Franklin. That's wonderful. Elected officials who are here, colleagues, family, friends, and fans of Shirley Franklin. I'm Cecilia Corbin Hunter, a citizen of Atlanta. I'm Cecilia Corbin Hunter, a citizen of the USA, a taxpaying resident of the city of Atlanta, former Atlanta city government executive, colleague and friend of Shirley Franklin. I thank you for this opportunity. It's deserved and much appreciated. Since early 1970 and before that time, Atlanta's leadership, its mayors, have set national standards for good government. We have been blessed with visionary and proactive leaders, unafraid to chart new pathways to progress that will be in place for 100 years or more. That was Maynard's standard. Since early, the late Mayor Sam Masell thought transportation for citizens should be free, like library services. He put forth a plan that led to Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority and a 15-cent fare for its first 10 years. The late, great Mayor Maynard Jackson built on schedule and under budget what was then the New Atlanta Airport Terminal and put forth a plan for the inclusion of minorities, females, and small businesses in the city's procurement processes. Atlanta's MFBE program... I'm not ready to stop.
Pause a moment until this concludes and we'll extend.
The MFBE program became the FAA's standard for airports across the USA. Ambassador Andrew Young brought the world to Atlanta when the International Olympic Committee selected Atlanta to host the 1966 Olympic Games. His efforts forever changed the world's view of Atlanta. Mayor Franklin, elected in 2001, picked up the mantle of leadership and made us proud. After her election, she learned Atlanta's 2002 budget had a $90 million budget gap. This is her first year in office. She set about cutting jobs and raising taxes. The year ended with a $47 million surplus. She then set about to rebuild our 100-plus-year-old sewer system and eliminated daily federal fines. Now, you've heard much about her leadership in other areas. There's no question that Shirley Franklin has been an exceptional leader. When presented with a plan, a college thesis, to unite Atlanta's neighborhoods around abandoned railroad tracks, despite many naysayers, Shirley Franklin created the Atlanta Belt Line and a decade-building plan to ensure its progress. The Atlanta Belt Line is a gem in Atlanta's crown. It unites neighborhoods and has spurred development in Atlanta's most neglected communities and those which were prospering. It is revered by the citizenry and envied by other communities. It is a legacy that will last 100 years or more. And I recommend that it be named in honor of the tenacious and former-thinking, former-mayor Shirley Clark Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. I'd like to acknowledge, before our next speaker, Councilman Antonio Lewis is with us. We thank you for your presence, sir. Please, next.
We have the Honorable Quanza Hall.
Welcome, Congressman Hall.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Chairman, former colleagues, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen, Quanza Hall, former city councilman, school board member, congressman. You know, I had to at least come down when I heard about this because Mayor Franklin touched me from a very early age. I met her when I was probably five, six, seven years old. My father worked here with her. His name was Leon Hall, and they served in Maynard's administration. So meeting her in the old building and seeing her height, I was almost, you know, as tall as she was back then. But then, fast forwarding, as a lifeguard and working at the city, as a school board member, as a city councilman, serving aside her, and then just seeing all the great things she's done, the Civil Rights Center, as Mike Ross mentioned, the Belt Line, Fourth Ward Park, I mean, all the things that you don't even know about. You know, she had a big heart. She gave to people. She cared. I know Cabrel. I would be really proud today to know that we're doing this to honor her. So I wanted to come down and let you know I support it. My particular idea is that we name a riverfront or Riverfront Park for Mayor Franklin. She's one of the greatest mayors we've ever had. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman.
We have Taylor Michelle Gray.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Michelle Gray, and I'm a student athlete at Benjamin E. Mays High School and Miss Mays' first attendant. My first time meeting Mayor Franklin was February 9, 2023, where she was a special guest at a Google Scholar event hosted at Mays. There, she spoke about the importance of being involved in the community and offered many ways to help us as high school students to be actively engaged in and out of school. She even personally gave out her number to those who wanted to stay in contact with her. A year later, I saw her, as well as Councilwoman Boone, on a college trip to Savannah State University, where she accompanied and helped educate us on the history of Savannah. Mayor Franklin has been one of the many reasons students at Mays have been able to go on all of those amazing college trips and participate in different organizations outside of Mays. I know she's not here, but I just want to let her know that we are very grateful and thankful for the many impactful things that she has done for us. And to honor her, I would recommend and love to see a major street or a park named after her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Next, please.
Next we have Ms. Dorothy Hart.
Good afternoon. I just want to speak on her heart, what kind of heart she have. I met her, what everybody talking about, a street where I would love Tucker Warner Drive to be named after Shirley Franklin. It's hard to spell, too, number one. And when I... I met her jogging up and down Tucker Warner Drive, and I lost my two grandsons. They was like six and seven. I'm running everywhere looking for them. And I run down Tucker Warner, and lower and below, they was in Shirley Franklin's house. She had pulled them in her house. Didn't know them from... Just brought them into her house. That's what kind of heart she have. And I watched her jogging up and down Tucker Warner Drive. If she walk across a piece of paper, she gonna pick that paper up. This lady have a beautiful heart. She's a beautiful lady. And she always tell me, write it down, write it down. So I think Tucker Warner Drive should be named Shirley Franklin.
Ms. Hunter earlier reminded us of Maynard's 100-year standard. Do things that will last for at least 100 years. And now, Ms. Hart says, do things that are easy to pronounce. So we thank you. Next, please.
Greg Pudgeen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the distinguished Atlanta City Council. All the members here on this body taking on this wonderful task. To my friends, to my fellow city employees, Greg and I were on the staff at the same time. I was Greg P., he was Greg G. We said, choose whichever you want. One is smart, one is beautiful. Whichever one you want us to be. I am happy to be here today to speak about my dear friend, colleague, and mentor, Shirley Franklin. We've been on a long journey together. It started back to her Mayor Jackson's first term. I was her chief of staff for full eight years when she was mayor. I was her deputy at the Olympic Games. We've been on a lot of tasks together. Most of them were... Most of those tasks she conquered, though there were a few losses along the way. I think that a scholarship program in her name for students from each of the colleges here in Atlanta, meaning Spelman, Morehouse, Clark, Georgia Tech, and Georgia State in their political science departments, there would be the Shirley Franklin Scholarship Fund. And each year, there would be a soiree where those students come and make a presentation about something that was relative to Shirley Franklin's history. And I would like to see that happen. I think that she would like to see something like that happen. While I can't speak for her now, I've always spoken for her a lot in the past. When she was selected to be one of the top 10 mayors in the whole wide world, I told her she was on my shoulders. That meant that I was one of the top 10 chiefs of staff in the whole wide world. In her normal playful way with me, she said, shut up. You don't mean that. But thank you all very much for the time that you're dedicating to this wonderful woman and this wonderful project. Congratulations. Two minutes.
Well done. Thank you, sir. Next, please.
The last speaker, Richard Rose.
Good evening, commission and fellow Atlantans. I'm Richard Rose, and I'm going to be quick. I would echo a couple of people that we can't say enough about Mayor Franklin. The best thing about it, her work seems to still be going on. Her work is not done. I'd like to offer two options. One, the Belt Line named for Mayor Franklin, or my favorite Memorial Drive. They both have distance. They're long streets or long installations. And for Mike Ross's, the Memorial Drive can be seen from the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. I want to ensure, are there any other speakers, members, clerk, and our one colleague who yielded? You have yielded and do not wish to speak. With that, thank you, Councilwoman Overstreet, Councilwoman Boone. Thank you to the distinguished and thoughtful and patient members of this commission. As you heard, Amara Kennedy remind us, our deliberations now begin. We have listened to the community, and we look forward to deliberating on your behalf and offering recommendations. So please remember, this is not the last opportunity until October 11 at 11:59, when this good man will be seated by his phone and his computer, checking the latest entries and suggestions. We've heard extraordinary ideas tonight. We are so blessed to have you as our friends and partners in this important process. To Mayor Franklin's family, thank you for your presence. Amara, you have a quick announcement.
Again, as Dr. Franklin said, thank you so much for joining us. Just as a means of timeline, so as again, as we've reiterated, October 11 at... That's right, at 11:59 PM, we will continue to have public comment, both through the online process as well as through locations across the city that will be publicized. And then, the commission, this body, will reconvene in the latter part of October to receive all of that feedback and the synopsis from the council staff. In November, recommendations will then be shared with the full body of the Atlanta City Council, as well as Mayor Dickens. And with moving forward that, from that process, in November, legislation introduced and the official presentation of what will be the final way that the entire city of Atlanta has agreed to honor this great leader. So please, just wanted you all to know that information. And please, 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 share with your neighbors, your friends, your church members, your sorority, fraternity members, and continue throughout this city that October, so now through October 11, there are various ways for people to give their input. Because we do want to continue to hear from the masses of Atlantans. Thank you.
Thank you, Amara. Before we adjourn here, two words to take with you as we go into the good night. One from Frankie Beverly, who loved Atlanta, performed here often, you saw him. "We are one." We live in a divided nation and a polarized community, but remember, we are one. And finally, the rabbi from the medieval era, Rabbi Maimonides said, "The world is equally balanced between good and evil, and your next act will tip the scale." Thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved. We stand adjourned. All right, all right, thank you.